And started had a little bit of technical issue. My name is Lauren Shackelford. I'm the current Chair of Washington County Planning Board. This is the June 6th regularly scheduled both Washington County Zoning Board of Adjustments Meeting and Washington County Planning Meeting. So we'll start with the zoning and Board of Adjustments Meeting first. We could have roll call, please.
Anthony McNutt.
President.
Joe Maynard. Maria Banks.
Lisa Miller.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here. Okay, so we do have a quorum, so I'll declare the meeting as ordered. First item of agenda is the approval of the agenda. We have a variance hearing in the county for saddle shop property variance and a second one in the county for Cedar Groves Farm variance. Any changes or modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Make a motion.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we'll move on with new business. First item on the agenda is the saddle shop property variance. If we can start with staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a variance to split 0.4 acres off of a 4.82 acre parcel to sell as non-buildable land. Tract one would be 0.40 acres and tract two would be 4.42 acres. The variance would allow one of the parcels to be less than one acre. The 4.2 acre parcel will be the location of the White River RV Park CUP and the preliminary LSD approved by the planning board on December 7th and March 28th respectively. The hardship for this property is that the portion of land being split off is non-buildable. The east corner is bisected by the Corps of Engineers right of way for the waterway and to date, planning staff has not received any complaints about the project. There are a number of Springdale water conditions and then we have our planning conditions and they've all been posted on the staff report online.
Thank you.
And this project was tabled from last time for lack of quorum, so.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, any questions of staff from board members? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the applicant if you would please, sir.
The applicant, like they just called us, they were unable to attend because they had like another lot booking with a different city. So if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
Okay. So is the, my only question, the unbuildable tract that's being split off and sold, is it being sold to an adjoining property owner?
Yes, yes, sir.
Will there be a lot combination or will that fully exist as an independent?
It's gonna be an independent for now. I don't think they're gonna combine it for now.
Okay.
But if it happens, it's gonna be a part of like a bigger like lot, so.
Okay, alright, alright, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, but I believe, I believe he wants it to keep, he wants to keep it as a buffer between them, so.
Okay. And it's got Corps of Engineer issue as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address us on this item? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board for action.
I can tell it looks like it's in a ravine where the split is right in the middle, so it seems pretty straightforward. I'm moved, we approve it immediately.
Got a motion? And a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, item B, Cedar Groves Farm variance, also for acreage. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a variance to combine four lots into two. All four lots are less than 0.5 acres currently and as a result of the replat, lot 6A would be 0.99 and lot 4A would be 0.94. Because both lots resulting from the lot combination would be less than one acre, the applicant is seeking a variance that would allow the lots to be less than the one acre minimum. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints on the project.
Okay.
And we have a number of planning conditions and water conditions that are also posted.
Thank you. Any questions of staff from board members? Okay? If not, the applicant.
Ten minutes with that was a professional answer, but I think that really was explaining everything essentially. We have four lots, same, my client was all four lots. He'd like to take two of those and combine into one and then sell their two lots and combine into one as well.
Okay.
Where we're not hitting a one acre mark, but we're very close, but we're also bringing non-conforming lots closer to the one acre.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Should I repeat myself?
No, so basically, you're, you're combining four non-conforming lots into two lots that are closer to conforming.
Correct.
Okay. Have you seen the conditions from both Springdale City Water and Washington County?
I have not reviewed those in depth.
Okay.
No, I have not.
Okay, alright. Any questions of the applicant from board members? Okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this item? Okay? Seeing none, I'll close public input and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, there is a project by like the end, the other, there's another project that tied to, up to the approval of this variance at the end.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Heads up there. There's another item on the planning board that's associated with this. If this gets approved, then we'll have another item to look at on this property later in the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Cedar Grove Farm variance.
Got a motion or a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is all that we have for the zoning Board of Adjustments. I will take a motion to adjourn that meeting. And a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. I will call to order the Washington County Planning Board meeting for June 6th, 2024. If we can start with roll call, please.
Anthony McNutt.
President.
Joe Maynard.
Maria Banks.
Here.
Lisa Miller.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here. Okay, so moving on, the next item is the approval of the minutes, the May 2nd, 2024 minutes, which was the last meeting. I was not in attendance, but I have reviewed the minutes. Does anybody have any corrections, modifications that need to be made to those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to new item, our new business. Well, I'm sorry, I apologize. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. It looks like we have one, two, three conditional use permits. I'm not gonna read those out. And then we've got minor subdivision? And two other subdivisions? So it looks like three CUPs and three subdivisions. Is there any changes to the agenda stated? Okay? Any questions from board members? I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, let's move on. New business, the first item is in the Tawny Town planning area. It is, I'm gonna miss, Slinkler Wedding and Events Center. I'm sure I'll ruin that name, I apologize. Okay, if we can start with staff report.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to have a small wedding and events venue on his property. The applicant is in the process of splitting off one acre to use for the CUP from his current 10 acre parcel. The venue will be completely outdoors and will accommodate up to 50 guests. There will be a 10 by 10 platform and a seating area for the ceremony as well as a 63 foot by 63 foot parking area to allow for about 25 vehicles and handicap accessible stalls. There will be a 3 by 4 sign near the driveway, non-illuminated. Hours of operation will be as needed between 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. on Saturdays and then by appointment only between 5 p.m. and 7 p.m. during the week. The business will be operated by two employees and to date, planning staff has received three complaints in opposition to the project citing inadequate road capacity, noise, pollution, and safety concerns. There are a number of conditions that have been posted online.
Okay. Any questions of staff from board? Seeing none, I'll ask the applicant, come up and tell us a little bit about your project? And I do apologize if I messed up that last name. Okay?
I do have a question.
Yes, yes.
Does any of the split meet all the requirements of land?
Okay. Yes, sir. They're working on it and it's in the planning area of Tawny Town, so it has to be approved by the city of Tawny Town and then come to us.
I don't, I think you need to punch a little, the button, make the red light come on.
Yeah, the first one, yes.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Sorry, yes ma'am. You wouldn't mind starting up?
TJ and Brittany Slinker. It's German. So we are the ones that own the property. We own 10 acres and as she said, we are planning on using about an acre right now for just a small wedding venue or gatherings, mostly Saturdays. We bought this land in 2020, basically just fell in love with the area. We love that area. It's just a quieter area, but it is growing as we know Tawny Town is definitely growing. We have kids, we've sent two through the Springdale School Districts. We still have one going through the school district. So we've just seen the growth. We know a lot of people in the area. My husband's worked for the city for 17 years. I as well work for Luke Dental in Fayetteville, Arkansas. So we are just real involved with the community, know a lot of people, friends, family, just hearing a lot about the need for something like this in the area, especially that area. There's a lot of venues around, but nothing near Springdale or Tawny Town in particular. And with the growth, we think that something out there would be a great opportunity, not only for us, but also for just the restaurants around there. And there's a wedding shop right down the road in Tawny Town that would really benefit from that as well. Just several different things in that area that we think would definitely get some good revenue from, from it. We also, like our neighbors, love that it is a quiet area, so, which is why we have chose to make it a small venue. It is outdoor, we wanna keep it around 50 people. We wanna keep it mostly on Saturdays. There are two entrances and exits, which makes it a lot more convenient. The traffic flow, we don't believe will be a major issue. Trying to think. Going back to the venues, it's just really hard for people to book those right now. I know a lot of people, relatives and friends who have tried to book venues and are booked out for years. So that's another reason why we just feel like that something like this is something that we could help people with. But again, we have taken all the different considerations in keeping this a small, quiet community as well as trying to help our community with the revenue and things around. But also keeping it quiet by following strict guidelines, rules, standards for our venue. We wanna make sure that they all follow the rules and we will make sure that they abide by those and by having noise ordinances, cutoff times, ensure that they clean up after everything and that all the surrounding areas are undisturbed.
Okay. Two questions real, yeah, two questions real quick. I'm trying to see by the site map, do you guys, you guys live on this property?
We do.
Okay, alright. And then you've seen the conditions, it's Saturday hours and then by appointment only any other time. Any idea how many venues, how many events you think you'll host?
For now, we'll probably start out with maybe a couple a month, just kinda see. We're wanting to start out slow. I mean, we're new at it. It's kind of a trial and error, so we're just gonna start out slow, maybe a couple a month for now, see how it goes and probably just kinda stick with that for now. Like I said, we're not in it to just make a killing, anything like that, but it's just something we're very interested in. We love the land, it's a beautiful piece of land and we just think that we definitely, people can benefit from it and it's something that we could offer.
And you've seen the conditions as proposed as well with the hours, the screening, that sort of thing? You guys are good with all that?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, any other questions from staff?
Well.
I'm sorry.
I have one.
Board members.
Chairman, item seven of the planning conditions says amplified music to be limited to interior facilities. They have no interior facilities, so the way I interpret that is that there will be no amplified music.
Except to read the next line, except for the event of outdoor ceremonial music.
Ceremonial music. Here comes the bride.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Other questions?
Parking, because that's, that's on the thing and this is a gravel road?
Yeah.
And can two cars pass at 40 miles an hour?
Two cars pass at 40?
At 40.
I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea of the width.
Certain areas are wider than others. There's some that you'll have to pull over and let the others pass by.
Will you be preventing people from parking on the road?
Yes. I mean, as far as we'll tell them not to, yes. I mean, we have, we have designated parking, it's down off the road.
Right.
Lot of ways.
Right. But you know, if it gets bigger or what have you, that parking on the road would be a serious concern for your neighbors, I'm sure.
Yeah, and our property is off field for the most part, so if we gotta come back and grow or additionally, we'll have places for parking.
Just over for parking in the grass?
There shouldn't be any reason nobody parks on the county road.
Yes. There should be no issue with that, yes.
Other questions?
I have a question. Weddings just for the ceremony? What about the meal afterwards or is it just for the ceremony itself? Or are you gonna build something for people to sit and eat or what?
We don't plan on any buildings at this time. Maybe rent, you know, the white tents, set up two different tents possibly for ceremony if, if they want. And then over here, you know, seating for tables and chairs for, if they do.
There is room to have like some round tables if they wanna sit and have like a small.
Reception.
Appetizer type reception, yeah.
If they wanna bring their own food or.
We're talking maximum capacity of 50 people.
So it's not like.
It's not a, I mean, it's.
Exactly.
Five tables.
Alright, other questions?
Is, you mentioned two driveways off of the property. Are both of those on Eldridge Road?
Well, there's one, one driveway.
One driveway.
But, but the county road itself, people can access from the north or south.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Misunderstood.
So it's not like it's a dead end dirt road or a cul-de-sac where everybody's coming from.
Correct, yes. You can come off of Wildcat Road or off of Harmon.
And then any growth, we'd come back for more approval?
Yes, correct.
Right.
Any other questions from board members?
It shows the ceremony in one area here and then the acre that you're closing off, what's that gonna be for?
That's for. That's the ceremony, which is that acre right there.
Oh, that's the acre. And what about this piece here? Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
They've split that acre for us to use. They've split that off.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Open it up for public comment. If there's anybody in the public that would like to make comment on this item? Hello?
Hello?
If you would, please state your name and address for the record before we start.
Am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
Casey Penalto. My address is 1565 Eldridge Road and my family's land is immediately across the road from this project. It's the Ronnie and Terry Trust. So my concern is traffic on this road. There are areas that are passable, but there are areas that we pull into each other's yards to make, let people pass. My other concern is the entry to this road from Wildcat. You can take an axle out on, there's so many potholes. And Wildcat Road itself, where the county owns it, also, we play Frogger every day because of the potholes out there. So the additional traffic I'm concerned with. I noticed on the slides that you have up here, it talks about amplified music, music outside. Their application says no music at all, so I'd like clarification on that. And it says mostly Saturdays in their application and it was also stated tonight, mostly Saturdays. So are the hours truly Saturday? 10 to 10, weekdays 5 to 7. So mainly concern, traffic. And this is an area of homes that are not going to be subdivided. It's homes, family homes, so not really interested in the growth on our road for this wedding venue. So I know there's others here that also wanna, wanna talk about this as well. If they do get this approved this evening, how easy is it then to continue to grow this conditional use permit? Come back and get a building? Come back and add more acreage to it? Things like that? So those are my concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Hi. Same thing, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure.
Yep.
My name's Natalie Casmarsek, 1388 Eldridge Road. Our property, the pasture is actually touched with the Shinkler residence. So I have, again, the same kind of concerns with increased traffic, congestion, road wear and tear. I actually do have a lot of livestock and my property does touch and the way they want their ceremony space is gonna be in the back part of their property. So my concern is with the stress to my animals, one. Two, if there is drinking and there's inebriated, inebriated people, a cute donkey's really fun to touch. So I have an immediate concern for the safety of my animals, along with the fencing. The fencing is very much so just a pasture fencing. It's not, you know, the best fencing. So I also have noise pollution, so I bought my property three years ago. I moved from a big city and wanted the country life, so part of me is very opposed to having more noise in our area. We already have a neighbor that's to the left of, well, if you're looking at my house to the left of our property, that throws really loud parties. So the thought of having another event that happens every Saturday continuously is not Emergency access, the event traffic impeding any kind of access to emergency vehicles or those at risk of needing medical help. Like I said, our roads are pretty narrow, especially so past my property, it starts to open up, which there's realistically only like two other houses that that really impacts and one of us, theirs is the Shinklers. So anybody, my house going towards Wildcat Creek, there's gonna be a big bog down in traffic if there's ever a medical necessity. I'm also concerned about the drinking, honestly, 'cause I used to be a wedding coordinator, events coordinator for a number of years and we had a full staff. We had a bar and we had people that monitored to make sure that people weren't getting too inebriated and there was still always accidents. So if that's not happening here, then what's the probable cause of them causing accidents to our property, to our dammit, or damaging our property? I worry about, I know they addressed pollution, but of course, that's always a concern. And then just quality of life, privacy invasion, it's a change in our community, community atmosphere. And then our property value, the perceived nuisance of a wedding venue makes it less attractive in the event that we ever wanna sell our homes because, like I said, we wanted a rural setting, that's why we bought here. And Tawny Town's growing, so there's always that kind of concern that we're gonna get too, too bogged in. So if we ever wanna sell, which I never do, I'm curious, I'm wondering if that's gonna affect our property value.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Hi.
My name is Kim Johnson and my husband and I, Philip Johnson, live at 1546 Eldridge Road. We're directly in front of the Slinkers. Their house is behind ours. So my concerns, our concerns are still the same, the traffic, the traffic, people speeding down that road. They go way too fast as it is. Typically, people will be, I mean, there's not a speed limit posted, but people will fly down the road. I mean, we sit on our porch, we get dusted out. You know, the continuous traffic of adding, well, they say 25 cars, but do you know if, you know, they're gonna carpool? Because if you have 50 guests, that could be 50 cars. So, and the county keeps up with our road pretty good, except for on the end where the Wildcat is. There's potholes on that side, potholes on Wildcat. Like we said, you know, the road is still in poor condition. With that much more traffic, people coming to set up tents, you know, wedding vendors, whatever, you, you know, whatever they're gonna have. It's just gonna create more traffic, noise, you know, like they said, we have a neighbor that already has parties occasionally. We have parades down our road when they have these parties with horses, mariachi bands, things like that. I mean, we already have a lot of noise on this road and I feel like that's not what we're there for. I mean, we don't want the growth. I mean, we do know there is growth and Tawny Town is growing, but it's growing way too fast for the roads to keep up with. So, I mean, I would just think that you would take that into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, Ms. Johnson. Okay, anybody else like to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
I'm Philip Johnson. That's McKim.
Yes, ma'am.
We live at 1546 Eldridge. My property, as you can see, is right up to their house. I like TJ's good kid. As far as the traffic goes, there is already a need in front of our house to kinda pull up into my yard. And I've dealt with, you know, young people burning out in my yard and stuff like that. That's frustrating, okay? I can deal with that, they're kids. But to put 50 more cars up and down that thing, and I'm telling you, we sit from the road, I'm, I'm a little further than that glass or about that far. And I'm tired of getting dusted out. More than that, TJ, God bless you, buddy, but he asked me for an easement to get his water and his gas and I gave it to him, $9,000 easement. And I said, TJ, all I ask is you fix my fences and you remove the rocks. None were done. I said, alright, I've been young. Their house, I, I don't have a big light, I don't like a lot of light. That's one reason we live in the country. When they built their house, it, it looks like the county jail back there. I don't even find that appeasing, but if they're gonna have a deal till 10 o'clock at night, they're probably gonna add a few looms. And just leave our road alone, please. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else that'd like to address this item?
Thank you. My name is Beth Cogar. I live at 3661 East Denbury Drive in Fayetteville. I noticed the number 10, if there's future additions or expansions, new structures, that it must come before the planning office and potentially the planning board. So if that happens, and I think that's possible with the additional acreage they already have, but anyway, if that were to happen, what, would, would the neighbors be notified then if they came to, to the planning office?
Ms. Cogar, like you, you attend like the quorum court meetings and like, you know, any changes to any conditional use permit has to be a new application, so.
Could you say that again, please?
Any changes to a conditional use permit, it needs to be a new application. So they have to reapply and go through the whole process.
Okay, well, they just said potentially, so that's what I was worried about. Okay, well, they just said potentially, so that's what I was worried about, and, uh, okay, so, and for also Mr. Atta, uh, have you, you've been out there, you've looked at this road that people are talking about?
Yes, ma'am, and like we, we normally like to do the same process with every project, and we have not received any feedback from the road department. And if the applicants or the neighbors have any issue with the road's condition, they need to contact the road department to address that, so we've been, we've been through this before. Normally, like, we address the land development and we get feedback from the road department. So the road department, they said there is nothing, nothing about this project that will affect the, the roads itself. But like, if the road conditions need to be fixed, that's something they need to address with the road department.
Okay, in your opinion, is the road a suitable?
Well, it's, it's a county-like public road, like almost any road needs to be maintained from time to time.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to this item?
Hello, my name is Jesse Santos, I'm here on my father's behalf. I live at twenty nineteen Wildcat Creek Boulevard. Um, I'd just like to say, although I don't have any direct correlation with Eldridge Road, as, as the city's been growing, we still get a ton of traffic through there, so it's not something that I'd like to see go to place because of that reason. Um, even now, there's still tons of people driving completely fast, so imagine now you add a wedding venue to that, it's just gonna cause more havoc, as well as adding that event there, you have people that obviously drink, and it's just gonna cause, sir, a whole lot more problems.
Okay.
Just wanna say that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Sam, clarification, so just to make sure that we understand, the, how, the road departments doesn't take issue with this?
We never rece-
It's an immaterial effect on the road because you're only talking twenty-five cars?
Yes, I mean, that, we never received any feedback of any sort from them, so.
Okay, would this, if this is approved, would that in any way assist in getting the county to do something on the road, or is it just, it has no material?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't speak for the road department, so.
Gotcha, okay, I apologize. All right, um, questions of staff, questions of the applicant, actions? What's the board's position?
I, I've always maintained that public roads are for public use, and how the public uses them is not relevant to this board. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve this conditional use permit.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, I assume that's subject to the conditions as set out by planning?
Obviously, yes.
All right, so we got a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, next item is the Round Mountain Fire Station Conditional Use Permit. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map. The site map and the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to build a fire substation on a two-acre parcel of land. Only zero point two acres will be used for the project. The building will be forty feet by sixty feet, metal building with two twelve-foot by twelve-foot overhead doors, one front door and one bathroom. A twenty-five foot by fifty foot gravel parking lot will accommodate up to twenty vehicles with one handicap parking spot near the front door. The new station will have the ability to house three to four apparatus. It will initially house a pumper and tanker, um, and the brush truck that allow lower response times to surrounding service areas. Hours of operation will vary, as employees and volunteers will only be there at the location in the event of an emergency or during training and maintenance. There are up to five regular personnel who will use this location, and planning staff has not received any complaints about this project.
Okay. Um, any questions of staff from board members?
What, what are the road conditions? If they're gonna have a, you know, a fairly heavy, you know, I don't know, five-ton, ten-ton trucks? If they, you know, upgrade to those kinda pumper trucks, what are the roads like in this area? I can't really orient myself to that.
Yeah, there is, there is no issue with the roads, and like, it's, it's a substation, so most likely it's gonna have just like the tanker and the, uh, the other, like, vehicle for like support to the main round ma- mountain, so it's not gonna be the main fire station.
But is it an asphalt road, is it on an asphalt road?
I believe so, yes, sir.
You believe so?
Yes, I've been there like once.
Does, do anybody have any other beliefs?
Yes.
Thank you, Sam.
It is, it is like on an asphalt road, yes. And this is like in Fayetteville planning area, so it's sort of been asphalted.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Is there a member or a representative of the applicant?
Uh, he just, he called like this afternoon, he has like, uh, fire, fire like, um, related like meeting and, uh, hot springs, and like, he's driving back here.
I, that's fine.
I don't think he's gonna make it.
I'll open it up to public comment, is there anybody in the public that would like to address this proposed fire station? Seeing none, I'll close it back, typically, I don't, we don't do a lot with that applicant here, but I can't imagine anybody have an issue with the fire station for protection, so.
I might, but, uh, is this a publicly owned thing, or is it a privately owned thing?
It's, it's volunteer fire.
Somebody has to own the property.
Five oh three C, it's a five oh, it's, it's a nonprofit.
Okay, all right.
Yes, and they're trying to like to improve on their ISO, like, uh, uh, basically rating, so they can lower like the entire like areas, like, uh, interest rate and, uh, taxes, basically, so they're trying like to do good then like that, so.
Sam, you mentioned this is in the city Fayetteville planning area?
Yes, sir.
So they have to, we approve the conditional use, they approve the?
Yeah, we already sent them, but we did not get any feedback from them.
And there was no feedback from any adjoining property?
No, no, sir.
All right, thank you, I should've asked that earlier, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve it?
We got a motion?
I'll second the motion.
And a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move on, do some land development hearings. Oh, we do? My bad, sorry, I jumped ahead. All right, uh, Bellevue Venue and Ground CUP.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to build a ten thousand square foot wedding venue and event center with a maximum capacity of three hundred people. There will be approximately one hundred and twenty-five parking spaces, with five of them being handicap accessible. The applicant will per, will be purchasing twenty-one acres of the thirty-seven point one-two acre parcel, and up to ten acres will be used for this project. If the CUP is approved, the applicant will apply for a large-scale development permit. The venue will have two full-time employees with the goal of four total full-time employees in the future. Hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday from eight AM to four PM, and Friday and Saturday from eight AM to eleven PM, Sunday from eight AM to ten PM, with the main business days just being Fridays and Saturdays. The, um, planning staff has not received any complaints about this project.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a stupid question, is this the Winslow exit or the West Fork exit?
Winslow.
Winslow, okay. Gotcha, okay, I'm trying to get my bearings, I didn't get to go look at this one. Okay, okay, all right, any questions of staff from the board members?
The project we approved last time, the old cabin, it's just like on the opposite exit.
Gotcha, okay, I, I know where we are now, thank you. All right, is the applicant here? Hi, if you would please tell us who you are and a little bit about your project.
My name is Carolyn Ram, my address is eight forty-four Seasons Drive, West Fork, Arkansas. Um, I, after getting, um, not approved by the quorum court at the last session on the last property I was trying to purchase that was, um, on the west side of the interstate, I learned from that lesson, and I decided to look for something that A, was on a paved road, B, had very few neighbors, and C, would still do what my, I needed for my business. So, um, this property, it adjoins, its corridor is I forty-nine. There is one person, it's a county road that goes up to the venue. There's one person that lives up there, and it is the seller of the property. I have met with, have met with or have letters from every person whose land adjoins the property, and every one of them, thank God, have been a huge proponent to this. They know that it's a prime piece of property, and they said, in their words, "We don't want an RV park or a truck stop or whatever, tell us about your project." So I met with, um, the Martins last Sunday. I have received letters from two of the other neighbors who are very, um, very supportive of it. It will, um, probably because of the, the money that I lost on the last project, which was over twenty-five thousand dollars, I will have to bring the size of the venue down just a bit in the beginning, but, um, the goal is still the same, to have a ten-foot square foot ven- ten thousand square foot venue, same idea as before. Um, I love, actually, I love this property better. It is more conducive to just a better traffic flow. Again, there's no one on that road, seventy-four, and then you hit Abilene. And it's immediately the first left off of Highway seventy-four after you cross the interstate. So it's a great opportunity. Um, I learned a lot on the last project, and so I was very careful to reach out to all of the neighbors, including one, there's one gentleman, he received, um, the notification about this meeting or about the permit. When the interstate came in, he lives on the west side of the interstate, but when the interstate came in, he has a piece that was still there. I, I wrote him a letter, too, I have not heard from him, but, um, I, I'm guessing that he was fine with that. It wouldn't affect him in any way, anyway, in, at all. Same thought as before, um, it's going to be typical event, will be a hundred and fifty to two hundred guests. It will seat up to three hundred eventually, that is my goal. But the owners that live there, they're an elderly couple, and they're very excited to see their property, um, be used in such a beautiful manner, in their words.
Okay, uh, same question I typically ask, have you seen the conditions? Do you have any issues with proposed hours? Uh, it'll only be served by licensed people, um, no amplified music outside, are you, you're good with all the conditions as proposed?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions of the applicant from the board? Okay, seeing none?
Thank you.
I'll close it down and open it up for public comment, if there's anybody that would like to address this item. Seeing no public comment, I'll close that section and bring it back to the board for action.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this with the planning conditions attached.
Got a motion for approval, subject to planning commission, planning condition commissions.
I would like to get a point of order.
Yeah.
Is it in our purview to put a, you have to have a licensed bartender, is that something we're able to do? Whether or not it's a good idea, I'm not saying.
That's, that's something that the applicant suggested, so to make sure, like, to ensure everything. So they will be licensed in the state of Arkansas, they're not bonded, but most of them are licensed, yes.
Yeah, okay, very good, I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second for approval, subject to planning conditions as set by staff. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am, good luck. Okay, now I get to do land development hearings, okay, well, let's move forward. Item D, venture minor subdivision, staff report, please.
All right, we've got our vicinity map and the site map. These are the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision approval to split one five-point-one-seven acre tract into two parcels. Tract one would be two point one-five acres, and tract two would be three point zero-two acres. A thirty-foot access and utility easement along the south property line of tract one would allow access to tract two. Soil work was completed on the thirtieth of April, and we actually received the health department approval just as we were coming up here today. Um, to date, planning staff has not received any comments or complaints about the project.
Okay, Sam, I know you're gonna get mad, I ask this every time, what kept this from being approved administratively?
Laurel, it's your turn.
Okay, Laurel, tell me, cuz we're, we're, we're in compliance with size.
Yes, so.
What brought this to us tonight?
Um, multiple tracts that are less than five acres as a result of a split needs to be approved as a minor subdivision, so that goes before the planning board.
Sorry, I started on two different planning and I never can keep those straight in my head. Okay, any other questions of staff, other than my stupid? Okay, is the applicant here? If you would please state your name and address for the record and tell us about your project.
Dana Rose with Sutterfield Land Surveyors, nineteen twenty-eight Highway seventy-one North in Alma, Arkansas. I'm representing the ventures.
All right, anything out of the ordinary we need to know about this?
No, sir.
You've got a dedicated utility and easement access, it looks like, you've got frontage, uh, ponds designated. Okay, any questions of the applicant from board? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody in the public like to address the board on this proposed minor subdivision? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion that we approve the venture minor subdivision with planning conditions attached.
We got a motion? And a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, item E, replat of lot eighteen Rolling Hills Estate subdivision, staff report, please.
Sir, vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a replat to split lot eighteen into two parcels. The parent tract is currently five point zero-three acres. After the split, tract A would be four point zero-three acres, and tract B would be one acre. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about the project, and this is the same situation as the last project.
It's a replat because it's in a subdivision, so.
Okay, any other questions or any questions of staff on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the applicants here.
Hey, board members, my name's Dave Jorgensen, and I'm here to represent this proposed, uh, what I call lot split. Five acres into one acre and four point oh-three, pretty simple, really.
Dave, my only question is, there's a house on this, is that correct?
House on each one of them, yes.
House on?
Kind of after-the-fact deal, but, yeah, it's, it's got a house on each one.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant from board? Okay, anybody in the audience wanna make public comment on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Sure.
If it wasn't split before, how, how come there's two houses on it, I thought?
I'll defer to staff on that one.
Yeah.
You can have one house per acre, so they had multiple acres, they were able to have multiple houses on the property.
Yep. But since it's in a subdivision, they wanted to split it, and that's why they're going through the process.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this.
Got a motions or second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Good deal, thank you all.
Good to see you. Okay, moving on, item F, replat of lots four, five, six, and seven Cedar Groves Farm subdivision. As staff pointed out earlier, this is the, I call it a lot combination that we looked at earlier.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map again, the site map, and the same neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a replat to combine four lots into two. All four lots are less than five acre, zero point five acres currently, and as a result of this replat, lot six A would be zero point nine-nine acres, and lot four A would be zero point nine-four acres. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about the project.
Okay. All right, any questions of staff from board members? Seeing none, I'll ask you back, you don't have to state your name and address, we got it from records from last time. Great. Tell us a little about what you got.
Um, essentially, kinda the repeat from before, um, we've got four existing lots, all are a little less than a half acre. We're taking four lots and combining them into two lots, larger lots. Um, both have adequate road frontage, and, um, the variance was approved for our acreage minimum being one acre, so.
Closer to compliance than where it was. Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions of the applicant from board members? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. We got a motion of recommendation for approval of this item as stated, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on to other business.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So we, uh.
Oh, did I skip one? No, I didn't.
No, you're good.
All right, you scared me. That's all right. All right, now, Sam, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So we discussed, uh, our, our staff, um, and the county attorney, presented the, um, the proposed, uh, planning and zoning ordinance to the, uh, service committee like last Monday, and we had a good discussion about it, and we're still receiving feedback from the, uh, JP's. And we're moving along, we're gonna see what happens and where like, where that leads. Everything we have is posted online on our like ordinances and regulation website, so we have a link to the web map of what proposed and what's current. And also, like, we have the proposed, uh, 160-plus pages like of the ordinances, like for you, for your lucky review, if you have any, you're welcome to send us any feedback, because it's also like, uh, your residence of the county. Uh, if this moves along, we need to have some discussion, like as the planning board, to adjust some of the, um, language and our like bylaws. And also, like, we need to adjust some of the, um, the fee schedule we have. They have not been changed since like 2006, and I guess it's like, uh, it's overdue to fix them. So that is like what contingent on like getting that like passing and moving.
Okay, it's been a huge undertaking, it's.
Well, it's been, we've, we've been working on it since 2018.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm not an attorney, and I don't know our regulations and ordinances, probably as I should, and the county attorney's not here, but if we get to the point where these look like they're going to be put in, it would be nice if we could have some sort of meeting.
Oh, definitely, yeah, definitely, it's gonna be like, yeah. Training and everything, absolutely.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that, anything else for the good of the order?
Well, that's, that, that's not my court, that's a quorum court.
Would you like to speak to the proposed, uh, zoning changes within the county?
Yes, let's hear what you think. Well, I'm hearing, I'm sorry, let me sit down. Beth Cogar, 3661 Embry Drive Federal. I'm hearing from a lot of people out in the county that, uh, they have a lot of questions. And I, some of my constituents reached out to me this week, and they wanna meet with Mr. Attah, and I said county attorney Brian Lester, but I, any, they have some specific questions that relate to just their property that they need answers to, and I can't answer them. And I've read that several times, and I still don't know the answer to it, so I would like to.
It would be great if we can receive the questions, at least like we can have something ahead of time to answer them.
Uh, the other thing I'm hearing is that people think that, uh, they want the county to come in, to come to them in the rural areas of the county, because they're the people who are gonna be most affected by this. They want the county to come and hold town hall meetings and have the maps there, and have Mr. Attah there, and county attorney, whoever, somebody who can answer their questions. Because, uh, you know, people, I know, people are reaching out to, I know, I'm the same way. People are reaching out to me, and I can't answer their questions. But, so I think that's a big thing that I'm hearing, and people are worried about the, uh, some of the ma, the map to, some people are not understanding that. And I don't know, I'm just hearing, the, the feedback I'm getting is that nine out of 10 are not happy with it.
We received another feedback that's 99.5% unhappy with it.
But thank you for asking me.
Yes, ma'am. All right, anything else from the good of the order?
No, sir, I, I would like to bring some.
Would you turn your mic on, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Are we gonna ever visit the reason for this planning board to exist versus the quorum court? Second, you know, they get a second bite at the apple, I mean, one of us doesn't need to, to do all the work. I mean, is that gonna ever be re, are we, are we gonna talk about that of?
That's the whole purpose of the new like, uh, planning ordinance, so.
So in my dreams, it would just be one of these groups doesn't have to deal with it, you save the money, and then the fees that you talked about, they all go down. Is that where we're going?
Nope, it's the opposite.
Ah.
Yeah. Well, compared to the other city, we're like practically like free.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, again, I, I'm not sure I heard all that, but another thing that I'm hearing is that the, the community, the people out in the, in the county, 'cause right now, they, if someone, I mean, if this passes, someone would come to the, to the planning director with their plan, correct, Mr. Attah?
It's, it's the reverse process. Nothing has changed but the zoning, so the only thing we're gonna decide, if this passes, let's say that passes, and those designated area, they are like zoned as commercial. And you have a project, and you come to us, and you're gonna say, "I need to make, start a business in this property." And if this property is already zoned commercial, there are like three kind of like zoning, uh, districts based on the size and the use that's gonna determine if it's gonna be commercial one, commercial two, or industrial. So the only thing that's gonna be like easier for them than going through the whole process and then go to the quorum court to be ratified, we're doing this in reverse. So they know already that is, this property is already zoned for commercial, so they can come to the planning board with the conditions, because they already have that zoning. So they're gonna go through the process with the condition to move forward with the project. Let's say in case if they have a proj, a project and a property that is not zoned commercial, they have to come to the quorum court to request a zoning. Uh, so it's, it's the same thing, they have to request the zoning, and that's the whole idea. It's as a reverse CUP, they come to the, to the quorum court, request the zoning. If the zoning is approved, that's your ordinance, like you write the ordinances like, this property is now, could be used for like commercial, and then they come back to the planning board to go through the whole process of the planning process and the conditions and everything. So it's, it's not someone like you can decide, "I'm gonna do this because it's this." So everything's gonna be like going through the planning board anyway.
But isn't it correct that then, if, if when they come to the quorum court, and one party is likely not to be happy with what the quorum court decides? So then that party, if they wanted to appeal, they would have to appeal direct to circuit court?
Yes, and that's not something like we, we, we discussed this like during the quorum court, because like, I guess like, the quorum court is having too much difficulties to reach a decision. So I guess like that's the whole point, is like moving this to the specialized like court to go and do that. So if like, if you're gonna appeal after it's been approved by the planning board or the quorum court, it has to go to the circuit court.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I'm, I just hear, I know that that normally appealing to a circuit court requires an attorney, and that can be very expensive. That's what I'm hearing from my people.
I understand, thank you.
Okay, appreciate it. Lots more work to do there, and we'll have plenty of time to visit. But it, uh, would create some use by rights based on zoning, which then you look at design and development instead of land use. If it's not in the right place from a map, from a land use standpoint, then the quorum court would have to rezone before we could even consider the developments. Much more in line with the municipalities that we deal with in other areas, so. Um, it's a lot of work on the front end, but it can make the process more defined and easier moving forward. So I appreciate all the hard work staff is doing, uh, everybody's doing on that behalf. It's, it's, it's a big step in our, in our planning of the county, so. All right, any other questions, comments, anything for the good of the order?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I'll second, I haven't seconded one tonight. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.